Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our October 21st, 2025 York City Council meeting. At this time, we will open it for public comments. As a reminder, all public comments are five minutes and they're only for non-agenda items. Up first, we have Heather Liondecker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I last stood before you on the 14th of August on behalf of the Springdale Neighborhood Association regarding a rooming house situation at 101 East Springitsbury. On that day, a notice of violation was sent to the owner, and since that time, the zoning office conducted another inspection and found that the owner had gone from eight suites down to three, which is still against code. However, the zoning officials made the decision to allow the owner to have those three suites with rumors slash borders. With our attorneys, we filed an appeal to this decision on the 22nd of September with an open date to be put on the agenda because simultaneously, a few days later, on the, on October 9th, we filed a text amendment with the city for the following reasons. One is, since the adoption of the city ordinance, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has provided guidance on the very definition of single-family. The Supreme Court says that short-term and temporary occupancy is not compatible with single-family uses. The city zoning ordinance doesn't define single-family, and so the proposed amendment will proposes a definition that will be consistent with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision. And the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision defines single-family as a single housekeeping unit. The proposed text amendment is also consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which states that the purpose of RS-1 is to be low-density and family-focused in character. The text amendment will also revise the definition of rooming house to remove any ambiguity and use terminology also consistent with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's single-family definition. And finally, the text amendment will preserve the intended character of the RS-1 district of Springdale Neighborhood in the City of York.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Don Hake.
My name is Don Hake. I'm a city resident and a taxpayer, and then some. I'm here tonight to present some information to you that I think is critical that you know. In 1967, in San Francisco, a gentleman by the name of Camaro protested the mandatory inspection of his rental unit. He rented a residential unit. And it developed into a court case, Camaro versus Municipal, and went all the way to the Supreme Court. So on June the 5th of 1967, the Supreme Court came down with a ruling, 623. The gentleman who wrote the opinion for the majority was named White. And what came out of that, to be succinct and within my five-minute framework, was that if a mandatory, while it can exist, it, the inspection must have the approval of the tenant and a court ordered inspection. Now, we here in the city for quite a few years have had a distinction between homeowner and renter. There seems to be a stratification. This law was designed to address the rights of the tenant. So that being the case, I was asked to have a reinspection of a property that I own, and I responded in the final, in the following way. I said, "Mrs. Newcomer, at my appeal hearing, I announced that the City of York has been acting in violation of my constitutional rights. I have made the tenants at 1016 West King Street aware of those rights and their rights. I'm now willing, under those conditions and understandings, to proceed with the reinspection." And then I gave Friday, October 24th, after 1:30 would be acceptable to me. And here is the tenant contact information you will need to get their approval. And I gave the names and the contact information for those tenants. Now, under the ruling of the United States Supreme Court, and I, to the best of my research, that law has continued without modification or change over the years. Now, 1976 is a few years ago. I happened to be around at that time, but it's quite a few years ago. That doesn't avoid the ruling. So I would strongly suggest that the board considers a moratorium on the tenant-occupied inspection properties until such time as you can confer and determine the legality of what you're doing and how you're doing it. I have here a brief thing that I will read.
You have 30 seconds.
It says, "Mandatory inspection programs can also violate the constitutional rights of property owners and apartment residents to privacy and freedom from unreasonable search and seizure. In fact, the U.S. Supreme Court has found the mandatory inspections lacking the permission of the apartment resident and conducted without a warrant were a violation of the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Moreover, courts have found that fees levied must be reasonably related to the actual costs of providing the service for which they are imposed."
Thank you.
You're quite welcome, and I hope that you give prompt attention to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Craig Zombren.
Hi, my name is Craig Zombren. I've lived in the city for 29 years. I was a previous zoning officer, building official, and director of permits, licenses, and inspections, and I'm here simply to implore that council takes a strong stand and require the owner of 101 South Springitsbury to return the property to its original condition as a single-family house. Not doing that will create, from my experience, sitting in many, many, many zoning hearings and building official reviews, it'll start a process to allow a deterioration of the neighborhood. Once you have a precedent set, another property owner will look at that precedent, and they will use that precedent to seek to do the same thing. Across the street from where I live, 35 Irving Road, that property's been vacant for about three and a half years due to the death of the owner. It's now been acquired by an investor. They've been working for three months. I've seen no sign of a permit or an inspection by anyone to see what's going on in the building. So I would encourage council to just direct the office to be a little more diligent with these matters, and then I don't think we would have the problem that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have? Is there any other public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening? Okay. It is now 6:10 p.m., and we require our legislative meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Johniskew.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Buckingham.
Here.
Washington.
Here. And at this time, we will stand for all who can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You may be seated. At this time, we will take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve our October 7th, 2025 legislative meeting. Second. Minutes. It's a second. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That moves forward. At this time, we have no presentations, awards, or announcements. Our next legislative meeting will be held Wednesday, November the 5th, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. All agenda items are due by 12:00 noon on October 29th. And our next council committee meeting is scheduled for October 29th at 6:00 o'clock p.m. here in council chambers. All agenda items are due by 12:00 noon on October 22nd. Moving along to our subdivision land development in Harv. Up first, we have Resolution Number 70. So introduce.
Resolution Number 70, introduced by Elsie Buth. It resolves that council hereby approve certificates of appropriateness for work to be done at 26 West College Avenue, 372 East Market Street, and 46 through 48 East Gans Avenue.
Move for a vote? Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buth.
Yes.
Johniskew.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Buckingham.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 71. So introduce.
Resolution Number 71, introduced by Queen of Washington. Whereas the city has received a preliminary final subdivision land development plan dated February 20th, 2025, and revised on April, I'm sorry, August 5th, prepared by a warehouse titled The Lofts at York Creek, providing for the improvement of 500 West College Avenue. And whereas the plan requires waivers to conform to subdivision land development ordinance, and whereas the applicant has always also requested that the city approve the plan, and whereas the applicant is seeking a modification to Section 133610 of the city's ordinances requiring a certain acreage be reserved for recreation space, space, for the payment of a fee in lieu of the provision of recreation space by preserving the dedicated such space acceptable to the city at the time of review and approval of the land development plan for 500 West College Avenue. And whereas the planning commission recommended conditional approval, now therefore be resolved that the above-listed waiver to Sections 133303A, 93704A, 2B, and 937.05A of the city's ordinances are hereby granted, and the city grants the deferral of the requirements of Section 1336.10 until such time as the land development plan for 500 West College Avenue is before the city for approval.
Move to approve. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
I just wanted to ask the zoning officer if, if, what do we, what do we lose? Is there anything that we lose if we approve this? Is there, what do we gain if we approve this?
City Planner, not zoning officer.
Sorry.
But, no, you're not going to lose anything. So, no, it's just for to waive the preliminary land, land development subdivision. I don't know if this is working or not, if you can hear me. This is just for the lofts, just for the loft side of dense ply.
And this helps them with timing, and this will expedite, get them closer to getting these built sooner?
That part of the, of the phase, that phase of the development, yes.
Okay. And, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Council President, if I can just say one thing. In the resolution, the, the deferral in that third-to-last line references 500 West College Avenue, that it should actually be a deferral until the plan for 550 West College Avenue comes forward.
Okay.
And so that's why it's, we're just pushing off the, the final completion of that rec space until the second time. And I do know there are a number of representatives of this plan in the audience. Thank you.
Mr. Flowers, for explanation.
It might help. I was there. I've been following this through planning, through RDA, and I know there are some other issues and things at play. It might be helpful if someone, you know, representing the project does explain, you know, what's going to happen. We're not, you know, taking away green space, but we're deferring that decision, just to provide that clarity. They can explain it far better than I can, but I was satisfied with what I heard of planning.
And I also, my understanding, I talked with staff and, and reviewed this carefully too, is alls we're doing is waiving the preliminary plans and going for a final plan once it's ready. That's what we would approve. Is that correct?
Yes, so Joe Stein with Warehouse Civil Project Director, been managing this project since the beginning on behalf of York Realty Partners. So what we have here this evening is, is for the lofts, and the lofts takes place within the existing buildings.
There we go.
Formally associated with the dense ply campus. So with, as far as the recreation goes, there, there will be many amenities, rooftops, courtyards, dog parks that are brought about as part of this redevelopment. And there will also be significant acreage of land dedicated to the Cudores Creek Trailway. We're talking several acres. And so while we're fine-tuning those exact numbers, we're pushing that off until the second portion of this development is a townhome development. So that's the 550 portion. That will be forthcoming very shortly. We've been running both these kind of concurrently. However, we're here this evening speaking about the lofts. We are asking for the waiver from preliminary plan, and then the deferment of the recreation fee until the, the townhome portion comes forward.
Ms. Vice President, if I could just address, so this is just, the waiver of the preliminary plan means there's only one plan that's going to come before you. You're not going to see a, a subsequent final plan on this, just so we're clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have worked through that final plan process with staff since the submission in February. Favorable recommendation at planning commission, very few outstanding items, no engineering items remain, just some dot the i's, cross the t's.
Thank you.
Any public council comments?
Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buth.
Yes.
Johniskew.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Buckingham.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 72. So introduce. Second? Or, or do I say? No, not yet. Sorry. Not yet.
Just one second. Did you already introduce that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that is Resolution Number 72, introduced by Queen of Washington. Whereas Joe Gurney, First Capital Engineering, on behalf of Dr. Roe 462, submitted a land development waiver at the property located at 462, 464 West Market Street, and whereas the applicant is requesting waivers, submission, approval to the subdivision land development ordinances, and whereas the plans submitted by the applicant are in accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the, the minute approval, now therefore be resolved that council hereby approves the waiver for land development submitted on behalf of Dr. Roe.
Move to approve. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
Yes. So I, I saw this at planning and at RDA. Residents did come out for the planning meeting with some, I thought were some valid concerns. The first one is their concern that at some point, the use may change. Now, at our last elected officials meeting, I learned a lot about, you know, affordable housing, and a lot of times I came with a 20-year guarantee that that use was going to stay in place, but I don't know if it's the way this project is funded, that, that doesn't seem to exist. So residents were concerned they might find themselves next to college students, you know, instead of, you know, older people. And, yeah, well, it's a valid concern if you live on Jackson Street, I guess. But that, those were their words. And so the planning talked about, well, if they sell, that, you know, they have to come back to use, so have to go through planning and zoning again. And that seemed to mollify the concerns a little bit, but I wonder that there isn't a commitment to keep it that way, and what is affordable? You know, what is the, you know, price on these units? And that led to their second concern, the parking, eight spaces for 15 units. Now, that works if it remains a, a home for senior citizens who may not, more likely not have a car, but if it turns into another use, it's going to put further pressure, and it's, you know, it would be fine if this was just one project asking for a parking waiver, but every project, whether it's the breakup of a single-family home into multifamily, every residence comes with a parking variance. So in a single-family home where you had one family trying to park two cars, you have three families trying to park two cars. An apartment complex, you know, where they only, you know, give one, you know, space per one bedroom, you have two cars probably, you know, two drivers in that apartment. So what's happened is this, you know, continuous approval of every parking variance with no, you know, judgment or look into, is it, is this really, has put real pressure. And so the residents of this neighborhood are very concerned because we've seen what's happened, we saw the woman that came to council, the cause of the pressure, and people do need their car to live here. People are being driven to do things that they shouldn't be. We see, I see cars parking on sidewalks, cars parking on unimproved surfaces. I see people parked at the yellow, up to the curb, making it dangerous to drive up. You know, and we saw the testimony from the woman who said someone in her neighborhood cut their own curb and built their own driveway, and then that lost different spaces. So because we are going ahead and waiving parking variances on every project, instead maybe saying, well, maybe fewer units might make this more doable, or, you know, we're putting a tense pressure on the residents of this city. And so, I mean, if I, if I'm comfortable this is going to remain in its use, you know, I don't see a problem, because I think it's a fine use, but it seemed like the people in the neighborhood were concerned about it, and I'm not sure all their concerns were fully addressed at that meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman Janescu. I would just like to add, some of my concerns as well was the parking available to the residents in that neighborhood when I was speaking to our planner earlier today. And then, I mean, if we continue with that use, one of the things I do like is the affordable housing for our seniors, as we know, we need more of that in our community, most definitely. And so that's all that I have to add, and I believe that. Vice President Buckingham, did you have something?
I did. I, I also spoke with some constituents, and again, we had the same concerns with, with parking. Is there anyone from staff who can address the, give us some assurance that it would remain in that use?
Good evening, everybody. I am Blandanees. Guess in this role, I'm Chief Opportunity Development Officer, the RDA. I'm also the Executive Director of the RDA, and we are transferring this property to the developers. So I'm wearing two hats, like, once again. I'm not the funding expert on this, but this is funded with HUD home dollars that were provided under ARPA. So it's, it's home ARPA. So that was under the same umbrella legislation that we have the ARPA dollars for, but it was HUD ARPA money. So it's actually the HUD Home Program, which we've used for many other affordable home programs throughout the city every year. And this HUD home dollars, or what we call home ARPA, the home ARPA dollars do have a 20-year requirement that that development, it's a, will actually be deeded in that way, that it can only be deed restricted for senior affordable living. And there's actually many more requirements because it's HUD dollars, even if the owner would want to sell the property, they can't cash out of a HUD project. That any, any sale or transfer or refinancing, that money has to go back into the project. So it's very, very restrictive money that this project is going to be maintained for at least 20 years as affordable senior housing. And the guidance behind this originally from HUD Home was homelessness prevention in advance. So this is a way for people to stay in their home. I'm not the funding expert, that's Tammy, but this, this is, I don't want to say it's guaranteed, but it's, it is funded by HUD home dollars. Related to the parking, and I don't want to speak for the engineer, but the number of off-street parking spaces required in a 15-unit building like this would be 30 spaces, or 18 spaces. The square footage of the spaces that are required for parking are larger than the lot itself. So in theory, in order to get the proper number of parking spaces, you would have to not have a building there. So it just, it doesn't, the geometry, the math doesn't math, so you have to have some kind of relief for that. There are parking spaces in lots nearby, and the developer and the, and the future operator, the Hunter Group, has already started talking to some adjacent property owners to see if there could be some, some leasing, just as a relief, as a backup plan if needed. But this operator has developed, RB Development, has developed very similar properties in other towns, and their history tells them that, you know, affordable senior housing, the residents typically don't have a lot of cars. If they're, they have a unit, I believe they testified at zoning, they have a 60-unit building like this in Harrisburg, and I think they have 10 cars parked there, just because those people don't drive. So happy to answer any other questions while I'm up here.
Well, thank you. Because I think that is, if it's going to remain, you know, used to house, affordable housing for seniors, then it's going to work, you know, but I guess, you know, the fear for the people in the neighborhood was that use could change.
Totally agree.
And then it's going to be a nightmare.
And that's why, from the, putting on my RDA hat, we've been struggling for years to find the right use. It's such a massive building, and, you know, you want to utilize as much as you can. 15 units is about the sweet spot, but then if you put in, you know, people with two or three cars, it, you can't, you're, you're really creating a, an unwelcome impact on the neighborhood. So we were thrilled when we started work with the Hunter Group, and then RB Development came down looking for a project, and we married the two of them together and made a nice connection, and so far, it's been working really well. We're thrilled with it. On wood.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Blanda, that block is not in the Central Business District, is it?
Is not. That block is lovingly referred to as the Miller Notch, because there is a notch that goes around it that is, does not allow businesses. From the previous historic zoning official, it did not want to have any businesses near residences in that, in that block.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any further council comment?
Just briefly, I learned that that used to be Dr. Worthwine's office and...
I spent a lot of hours in there with myself and my children.
A doctor's office, and when it was part of, as doctors wrote, and so it'd be great to see it converted into something functional instead of falling down, which it had worries that it would do that in the not-so-distant future, so thank you for developing it.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Manuel Gomez made it on time. I'm not going to turn this into an assault against these antiquated mandatory parking minimums, but I will say this, please, as we deliberate on these matters, bring something forward other than some very outdated, not-in-my-backyard dogma. As I walked here, as I'm apt to do everywhere else, listening on the stream, well, you need a car to live here. need a car to live here, well, says who? Says who? Is this an official decree? It actually is. It actually is. Not everybody lives the same way, folks. Not everybody lives the same way. Is that okay? Is that okay? Please ponder this.
Thank you. Is there any further, a public comment? Madam Kirk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of bills and resolutions. Up next, we have Bill Number 27. Move to approve.
Second.
And that is Bill Number 27, which was introduced by Queen of Washington at the October 7th Meeting of Council, a bill amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for economic and community development for Fund 29 to correct the budgets for the job training for the community, delinquent property tax, resulting in a budget reduction of $853,023, and adding additional funds for LifePath Christian Ministries and Veterans Housing Support Program in the amount of $350,000.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
No.
Just briefly to say that it's, I understand when we are changing the use of dollars, and so I would just, assuming the carryover fund balance is correct in our books and matches this number, I would be comfortable with this amendment or this ordinance, so.
Yeah, I did double-check, Councilwoman Buck. What you're looking at is where I had totaled all of the expenses in Economic Community Development out of Fund 29. What I am looking at is what's in the budget at the moment for the revenue line of the carryover amount, because I want to make sure that's accurate as to what's in our system at the moment. So I can confirm that the number that is on the ordinance is the correct amount as the starting point for this change for the line item of the carryover fund.
Okay. Thank you. Any further council comment? Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Kirk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 28. Move to approve. Second.
That's been moved, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I forgot. I did the same thing.
And that was Bill Number 28, which was introduced by Queen, or, I'm sorry, Queen of Washington at the October 7th Meeting of Council, amending the 2025 budget for Works for Fund 29 to correct the budget for the Market Street Bridge Replacement Program, resulting in a budget increase of $48,237, and reducing funds for Princess Street Center Program in the amount of $350,000.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 29. Move to approve.
Second.
Bill Number 29, which was introduced by Queen of Washington at the October 7th Meeting of Council, amending the 2025 budget for health by appropriating additional revenue and expenditures for additional funds received from the Family Health Council, a central PA for the family planning program to provide for under-reimbursed expenses for STD testing and outreach for a grant period of July 1st through 25 through July 30th, 26, in the amount of $5,882.36.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 30.
So introduced.
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
And that is Bill Number 30, which was introduced by Elizabeth Buck at the October 7th Meeting of Council, amending Article 951, Minnesota Solid Waste Management Act, to provide property owners with 14 or more residential units the option to opt out of the city's designated trash collection service and allowing for the election of private trash collection.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
I, yes, I had talked with, I had emailed with Solicitor Flowers about removing the applica, the last part of this text to exclude the application requirements, just so that if those change, if it, if the administration needs to change the process, that they're not tied to this exact process in an ordinance, and to give them flexibility. And I think if Solicitor Flowers still concurs that we'd look to remove that, but take, take her input.
So I think we discussed this at the last meeting, and your original question, what I do believe was related to some very specific, I don't recall, I think it was talking about the specific department or something that reviewed it. And I said that was a level of detail we didn't necessarily need to force the city to address. However, I did support the leaving these elements in so the applicants know what is going to be expected of them when they apply and how the city is going to be evaluating it. But of course, this is, you know, council's legislation, so if you'd like to vote on amendment, it's up to, that's up to you.
Thank you, Solicitor Flowers.
Then I'm okay, then I'm okay with leaving it the way it is, and ask if anybody else has any comment on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buck. Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 73. So introduced.
Resolution Number 73, introduced by Queen of Washington. Council hereby appoints Carlos Santiago as an alternate member of the Historical Architecture Board to fill the uninspired term of Lindy Hitzel, which term shall expire the first Monday of January 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 74. So introduced.
Resolution Number 74, introduced by Queen of Washington, whereas the fiscal year 2025 budget was approved to include an allocation of ARPA funds for the veterans' housing support, and whereas the city drafted an agreement with Prodigy Spectrum Management in the amount of $250,000 to assist in purchasing the property located at 630, 632 West Market Street, which will be used as low-income housing for veterans, now therefore be it resolved that the Controller and the mayor are authorized to execute documents with Prodigy Spectrum for the same.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there council comment regarding this matter?
I do have a couple of questions, as long as there's anyone here who can answer them.
Yes, we do have a representative here.
Oh, great. LaBelle's here. And also, Solicitor Flowers, I think it says for purchase and construction, but ARPA dollars can only be used for purchase? Is that correct?
And that, so there was clarification after our initial, after this initially came through, that I believe it's strictly for purchase. They're just looking to use this for the, the purchase. And there is a time, a construction fit-out timeline in the, the agreement, but it's not bound to, you know, our, it's not considered the, within the scope of the project as far as our dollars are concerned.
So my question would be, is there a plan for the, it's a rough property. Is there a plan? You, you have something in order to be able to afford to...
Funding to fix it?
Exactly, to renovate it.
Yes, ma'am. We have several funding...
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself?
Oh, I, I apologize. I'm LaBelle Howe of Prodigy, I'm the founder of Prodigy Spectrum. And yes, ma'am, to answer your question, we have several sources of funding to repair the property.
Is there any further council comment regarding this matter?
I guess, to that point, would you anticipate having it open and accepting tenants, residents by, when, or, when would you be open and accepting residents per plan? What's your plan for...
We, we, we actually already have residents lined up for the property. So we plan, it, it should take about five months to fix it, but the timeline that she was stating was pushed back a little bit because we thought we would have the funding to purchase it before now, and we're just closing on it now. So hopefully, I don't know how the process work. If we do get the funding approved today, I don't know how soon we can actually get the funds. If we get the funds, we can close, I'm working with the broker now, we can close the first or second week in November. If we close the first or second week in November, I say sometime in December, we can start the process of repairing the property.
And my only other question is, would you be able to tell us exactly what that purchase price is? Because on the program, it did say purchase and construction for $250,000. We are granting you $250,000, so.
The only $250,000, that's just for the purchase price. That's not...
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't know if Blanda's still here. Was this an RDA property?
No.
Was it a belated property, or it was just owned by somebody privately and now is being sold to somebody else privately? Is that, thanks Nancy, if you, or...
That's, that's correct, yeah. It's a private owner.
Private owner.
We, we purchased it from them.
Under the test. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Did you have more to say?
No, 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 I was just saying that it was kinda, if you want to call like a nuisance property. Since we've been there, without even owning it, we made sure the property got cleaned up. It was, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but it was a wreck. So we got it cleaned up. Some of the people in the neighborhood that used to hang around the property no longer hang around the property. And then the bonus, it is going to be a property that is going to serve amazing purpose for our veterans, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comment? Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Up next, we have Resolution Number 75.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 75, introduced by best Buckingham, whereas the fiscal year 2025 budget was approved to include an allocation for ARPA funds towards job training for the community, and whereas the city drafted an agreement with APJ Foundation in the amount of $75,000 to go towards program costs associated with their automotive trades training program, now therefore be it resolved that, that the mayor, controller authorized to execute documents with APJ Foundation for the same.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, move to approve.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
Yeah, I just want to quickly, you know, at our meeting over the safe net system, you know, everyone was saying, well, we're not putting, we're not investing into proactive programs like job training and education, and this is one example of many investments we've made in ARPA money to, you know, broaden our approach to crime prevention, to address underlying issues. And I don't think we, you know, pay, we don't really share enough information about that with the public, so I wanted to call that out.
Thank you, Councilwoman Janescu. Any further council comment regarding this matter?
I'll tag team on that because this isn't the only one that we've done to support youth, but we've, we spent a lot of our ARPA dollars, our programs at CA, yes, we have been able to focus some of those dollars on, on our youth.
Thank you, Vice President Buckingham. Councilwoman Buck?
I had a question from a constituent because they noticed that the address for APJ Foundation was outside of the city, and I was able to gather information that says that the reason this applies is because all of the students will be city residents, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buck. Is there any public council comment or questions? Is there any public comment or questions regarding this matter? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'll just say, go ahead, tag me in with Councilwoman Buckingham, and of course, Councilwoman John Askew. We do not praise these programs enough. You certainly do what you can to promote this type of economic development and community development. This is where your change is going to come from. It is the truth. It's part of that holistic approach. I could go on and on forever, but yes, 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 we should proclaim this more and more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment regarding this matter? All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Abstain. Is there a reason for abstention? I'm on the APJ Foundation board. All in favor of abstention, say yes.
Yes.
If you don't, say no. Okay. All right, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 76. So introduced.
Do I have to take a separate vote?
Take your time.
Just, do we have to take a separate vote for it? We just voted for, allow her to abstain.
Do we? What are you saying? Do we have to have a separate vote since there's an abstention and we voted on the abstention? Oh, no, you voted on the abstention, but...
She was the last vote.
Yeah, you voted, so you're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for checking, though. Oh, you waited for me, I'm so sorry. Okay. All right.
I just, I want to say something like, I just want to thank you all, I appreciate you. One comment I want to make with the young men.
Say your names, I'm sorry.
Abdul Jamison, founder of...
What was the first name again?
Abdul Jamison, founder of APJ Foundation. One of our main concerns right now with the young men is that we've, we've seen a lot of, like, drug use, and that's one thing that's plaguing a lot of the young men with decision-making, a lot of things that they're dealing with. So if anything does come through, I think, like, if anybody got programmed or things like that, that, you know what I mean, like, keep in mind that, you know, they're dealing with a lot of trauma, but also the marijuana use and, you know, all these smoke shops and things like that, synthetic weed, that plays with a lot of part of their mental. So we got to be really, really mindful of that. That's what I'm facing with a lot right now, so dealing with the young men, not making good, straightforward decision because they're always seem to be consuming something. So we got to be on a really, really, that's one of the bigger major rules with the decision-making, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution Number 76, which was introduced by Queen of Washington, whereas Stephen Marte was hired as a York City Police Officer on December 30, 2024, subject to a one-year probationary period, and whereas during that period, Marte serves as an at-will employee and possesses no rights to challenge his removal, and whereas on September 25, Marte engaged in conduct unbecoming officer, and such conduct also resulted in his arrest, and whereas by letter data on October 1, Police Commissioner informed council of the incident and requested that council terminate Marte's employment as a police officer, and whereas since he was appointed as a police officer by council pursuant to the Third Class City Code, Marte must be removed from his position through public action by council, now therefore be it resolved that the employment of... Now therefore, bear resolve that the employment of Stephen Marte be terminated effective immediately.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there counsel comment regarding this matter?
It says he was engaged in conduct unbecoming, and he was arrested, and has he been, has he been judged guilty, or is this just? I don't want to take his side, but I just, I don't know enough. And maybe it is just enough that he was arrested and a decision was made at that point to arrest him versus not arrest him. And I'm looking forward to hearing a little bit more about, about the situation. I know it's delicate, so I'd like to get a better sense of, you know, some people can be wrongly accused, and I don't know if, how that's been decided, that he has not been wrongly accused, I don't, I'm not asking properly, I've just, has he been given his day in court, or we don't need to wait to that point because there has been a preponderance of evidence that led him to be arrested, et cetera. Thank you, if you could.
Good evening, good evening, counsel, and everybody that's here this evening. I come for the good stuff, so I gotta be here for the bad stuff, too. Commissioner Muldro, Michael Muldro, just to make sure that I say my name also. So I'm gonna have to dance around this very gently. If I, if I look towards Brett and Kim. All right, best way to say this, so he has not been convicted, he had been formally charged, and he had, they, there was a PFA that was granted against him as a probationary police officer. That's it for us. I come through, thankfully for me, like, I'm not coming in as a transplant or anything. I went through this process as a police officer myself and had to make it through the probationary process, that one-year process. And you have to understand, it's a very rigid process, it's a very strict process, it's a process where we're told in the beginning, we don't even, we're not able to use sick days, we're not supposed to use sick time and vacation time and keep our nose clean. I remember when I came on, and thankfully, it's not that way anymore, but we were told that nobody wanted to hear our thoughts for the first year. You're in the probationary process as a police department, as city government, where you're looking to kick the tires on candidates, if you will, because your behavior is a predictor of future incidents. And unfortunately, nothing, and I have a young officer that's in the back of the room now that can tell you, and I have to, to his credit and everybody else that wears this uniform, nothing is tolerated as a probationary officer in a New York City Police uniform. So the mere fact that whatever occurred in that jurisdiction led to his criminal arrest, not a summary citation or anything, a criminal arrest and a PFA being granted against him, that's beyond the standard of what we tolerate.
Yeah.
Good, better, indifferent.
Thank you, Commissioner Muldro.
I appreciate that, too. I think that you can't just, a PFA being granted requires sort of a judge or someone to hear facts and scenarios, so that helps me with this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further counsel comment?
Can I just add one thing, please? I would just like to add that just like any personnel issue, the proper investigation was held internally, where the acting police inspector was involved, just like they do with any claims against an officer. And so there was evidence gathered, there was an interview done, like, there was more than just, hey, this came across our desk. So there was a thorough process that was completed. And I must say, I've never been, we've never gotten to this point to have to come to you with essentially an involuntary termination, so we don't come here lightly.
Thank you, Business Administrator Robertson. Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buck?
Yes.
John Askew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. At this time, we do not have a request for any future meetings. If we, do we have any public, I mean, counsel comment this evening? I just do have one, remind everyone, the mayor's proposed budget hearings will be tomorrow, 6:00 PM, which is Wednesday, October 22nd, and Thursday, October 23rd, at 6:00 PM. I do invite our public to come out, get involved, and have a better understanding of where the public dollars are being spent. Please come with your suggestions and your comments. Any further counsel comment?
I do. Um, last week, I was fortunate to run into and be able to speak with some representatives from Pennsylvania American Water, and I know there's a lot of concern about the rates going up, they are doing incredible infrastructure work across our city, but they are disappointed, and the president of Pennsylvania American Water was at this event as well. There are two programs to help low-income people, and they've had a much lower response, you know, than they thought. So I just said, you know, it's good for us to give a shout out, to remind people that those programs are in place. I'm sure that the staff here that has the office at City Hall would be willing to help people and guide them through the process.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak on that as well. Spoke to a few people right before getting here, residents, and me as a resident as well, because it's been a major jump as far as the bill, and you have a lot of people that's concerned, like Councilwoman Beck, Buckingham said, about, they have programs for low income, but when you're talking about people like us, you know what I mean, and you see your bill jump from low to 200, 200% higher, that's a real concern. And not just a concern for me and those that came to me within the last few days pertaining to that. Also, when you're thinking about homeowners that actually own their homes and they're already, I'm talking about our elders at this point, they own their homes, they're already struggling, possibly, I'm not saying everybody's in a struggle, but they may be struggling with paying their taxes already on that property, but now you have this 200% all of a sudden bill that has come. So the concern that really was asked today was, what happens when, yes, they have the programs, but you find individuals that can't meet the criteria of that program, now their bills are 300, $400 higher, and, and I'm speaking on, I'm using me as an example, because I've called and said, what is this? You know? And the only thing that they're saying is, well, this is because of, you know, the contract and things like that, but, I mean, we're not getting a lot of good, you know, stuff from it. And so it is a major concern right now of what is gonna be out there for people that is not on a low-income budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis.
Two little things. I don't know, I didn't hear you, you might have said it, but the reason that our next meeting, our next legislative meeting is November 5th, which is a Wednesday, is because Election Day is November 4th. So just a reminder for everybody to.
Get out and vote.
Get out and vote and look and see who's gonna be on your ballot. You can find that on the county website. And I wanted to, since, since Kim is here, I wondered if she could give us an update on the 2020 financial statement audit status.
It's happening.
Thank you, Business Administrator Robertson.
Yeah, no, the compilation is about complete, and it's actually in the hands of the auditors, which is the final step, so that's good news. And at the same time, we're rolling around on 21, 22, moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further administration comment this evening?
I did just want to apologize to counsel that I was unable to give them their update on expenses at this meeting, but I'm a little neck-deep in budget prep at the moment, so I will look to resume that the second meeting in November. I apologize.
Thank you. At this time, it is 7 o'clock, oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I can't get to the microphone, but I think I can speak loud enough. On Thursday, this Thursday, Asbury United Church of Christ on East Market Street is having what they call a homeless outreach program. It is not sponsored by Asbury, it's, it's just the house that it's in. They're sponsored by the Realtors Association of York and Adams County, and I think it would be worth all of your council while. It's from 9 until 2, just to stop in and say hello. It is the best organized project that I have ever bid to. Everybody will be there.
Thank you.
From 9 until 2, don't get there at 9. Get there later in the day. But I think it'd be worth you want to go and see what's happening there, because it is tremendous. It's not just for homeless, it's for people in trouble financially.
Thank you, Ms. Marie.
It's wonderful.
Thank you very much. It is 7:02 PM, and our meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a phenomenal evening and even greater weekend.